All right, good afternoon. It is 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 10th. This is Special City Council Workshop. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. All council members are present. Councilmember Myers on the phone, Desiree still? Or she'll be here?
Yes, she should be here in a minute.
So we'll skip rule call. First item is citizens' comments. Desiree, citizens' comments.
Yes, we only have one. Mr. Al Claus.
Thank you. Al Claus, Three Grand Pavilion, meeting number 24 since 4/13/22 regarding noise ordinance induced. Requesting for the 17th time in writing to provide us written assurances regarding enforcement of Section 925 DC. Amplified music from Sweetgrass has resulted into a nuisance which is being perpetrated by the city as a result of not enforcing the ordinance. The nuisance verbiage in the current ordinance was eliminated in the proposed ordinance by the Public Safety Committee by a two-to-one vote. What is the reason we would eliminate nuisance verbiage from the ordinance? Our speculation and effort to eliminate the sins of the past clearly at the expense of the residents who have an event center located in their neighborhood. The Empire continues to violate the above section. The administration and this council continues to perpetrate their actions. No one has stepped up, taking the bull by the horns and directed the Empire to discontinue taunting us. Livability statistics, September, 30 noise complaints resulting in 14 warnings, one citation. August, 17 noise complaints resulting in six warnings, zero citations. Combining these, we have 47 complaints which resulted in 20 warnings. That is 42.5%. One citation out of 47 complaints, 2.1%. Interestingly, the same period above, business license, received 15 complaints resulting in 15 citations. Wow, 100%. Planning Commission will be discussing decibel levels due to proposed noise ordinance. We believe in designating the neutral zone between the Sweetgrass Inn and our residential community. In an effort to protect our rights and livability, decibel measurements from the source be within 20 feet from the source. Will a new noise ordinance greatly improve our livability or will it legalize bad behavior? Any dialogue with the Lowboys or Mr. Dart regarding our Back to the Future proposal? Respectfully, I know Ms. Hack intently listens to my comments. They are aware. We are requesting they honor their oral commitments. Their inability or unwillingness to honor past commitments casts seeds of doubt regarding any future commitments. Item number six on the agenda under vision statement, to paraphrase, "The community committed to enhance the quality of life for those who come here to live, work, and play." On 9/12, we respectfully requested an asterisk be added to the vision statement which states, excluding residents which are located in proximity to the Sweetgrass Inn. An oversight, pros or calls? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other citizens' comments.
Great, thank you. Next item is special presentations. We have Chris Jordan, who's the general manager at the IOP Water and Sewer Commission with us. Chris and I talked a number of months ago and given everything going on across the street, just felt like it would be a good idea to update council. As most of you know, hopefully everybody's met Chris at this point. We do not have oversight of work. The only time the commission needs to come to us is when they're taking on a debt situation. But again, so this is just informational, not here to provide direction, Chris. So thank you for joining us. Appreciate it.
Yeah, y'all, glad to be over to just talk about current and upcoming projects. I'm sure y'all have seen the Forest Trails Waste Water Treatment Plan project. It's going well. Contractors been really, really busy working on the inside and outside of building, installing all pumps, ovens, and rains, electrical equipment. The project's been delayed a couple of months due to delivery of that electrical equipment out of our control. Manufacturer pushed it out about two and a half, three months. So that's moved the project completion date out a little bit. The contractors made up a little bit of time just to move along some of the work. But right now, we're scheduled to begin performance tests and start bringing the equipment up online early January of 2024. And then we'll run it all through the performance test and the project closeout where the contractors buttoned up, left the site is March of 2024. So it's been pushed back a few months, but after the plan is online, that's when we'll begin the demo of the Wildnings plant.
January or March?
I'm anticipating we'll probably start demo in February. Yeah, probably, I mean, that's kind of right now. We'll kind of sort of wait and see. We got to run the plant for a little while, make sure that everything's working the way it's supposed to before we abandon ship down there in Wildnings. But as I'm sure y'all are all aware, and talk about three of our other projects, 2021, American Rescue Plan Act directed $900 million to the state of South Carolina for infrastructure improvement. And that's being handled by the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Department. We bundled three of our projects together. One of them being the RO Water Treatment Plant Concentrate Line Relocation Project, Forest Trail Efluent Line Replacement Project, and install a conventional sewer. The first project, now, there are certain criteria that we had to meet to apply for that grant. One of them being a 25% local match on the funds of the total project. The RO Concentrate Extension Project, we've got discharge limits on the effluent that we discharge in the Hampton Creek, pH, temperature, flow, and copper. Copper is what's driving the line relocation. We detected trace amounts of copper in the effluent, so we need to move it from a bank discharge out into deeper water. So that project is estimated at about $710,000. The Forest Trails Efluent Line Replacement. The original pipe that was installed to take the treated effluent from Forest Trails and discharge it to the waterway is an old eight-inch line that was installed in the early 70s when they first built Forest Trails Plant. Now, that line's undersized for the new plant, and we're scheduled to replace it. And it's, let's see, it's definitely undersized if we decide to extend gravity sewer on the island, which is our third project that was bundled for the grant application, was install a conventional sewer in our first basin in our sewer master plant, which is from 41st Avenue, Palm Boulevard, to 37th Avenue, back to Cameron, and it'll catch a little piece of heart in that sewer basin. And we'll install a pump station, install gravity sewer, and that serves about, I think it's 93 homes in the area. So, and that project has an engineer's estimate of $4,662,777 just to install gravity sewer for 93 homes. Just to kind of give you an order of magnitude of how expensive this is for gravity sewer. But, so anyway, we've bundled all those three projects in the form of a SKEP grant, which is South Carolina, there's so many acronyms, it's hard to track it, South Carolina Infrastructure Investment Program. So we applied for that grant. The total, the total grant application, construction cost and engineering, was $6,898,450. Now, we're required to match that 25% minimum local share. We're in a financial position to be able to increase that match, which we thought would make the grant a little more attractive to the rural infrastructure community. So we were able to leverage 34% of the local funds and fortunately, we received the grant. So the total grant amount from SKEP, which is the South Carolina Infrastructure Investment Program, is $4,576,256. So that will pay for a large portion of those three projects. And that's just kind of a brief summary of what we've got going on across the street. And if y'all have any questions about any of those projects?
Chris, what's your timing on two, three, and four?
The RO Concentrate Extension or Relocation is fiscal year 2024, and Forest Trails minor effluent replacement and the sewer basin in the area I described is fiscal year 2025. The grant, one of the criteria in the grant is the projects have to be wrapped up June of 2026. So that could put us on schedule to be able to do that.
Scott?
Chris, quick question. You mentioned about the installation of the conventional sewer. Is that the, I call it the highway, and then you've got the off-ramps? Is this all the highway and infrastructure, but it's not the off-ramps? Is that, or in other words?
We'll install all the infrastructure up to the property line.
So if those 90, this is for the 93 homes?
That's for 93.
So would you have any idea of possible, I mean, this is ideal where you've got all the infrastructure in place and we're just talking about the connection fee. What, any idea what a connection fee might cost? Because this is where people seem to abruptly stopped it, stop it looking at sewer lines because of the variability and the cost to connect.
Yeah, the money that we receive from the grant will definitely make it a lot more affordable than if we did receive the money. And the commission hasn't decided, you know, on how it's all going to be handled just yet. It should be significantly less expensive than, you know, the $45,000 or $50,000 of connection that that number's paying.
Like, under 10, under 5?
I kind of, I mean, we got to bid.
Under 2?
We got to bid the project first and see how much with bids come in. And I'm sure y'all are aware, your engineer estimates your project at 4.6 million, it might come in at 7. But we did a sewer project, we're extending sewer down with Merit, about 12 homes. And I'm thinking, if I remember correctly, the connection fee was somewhere in the $20,000 range. I can get you a better number on that, but I don't remember the exact.
Mayor, if I may, just as a reminder, in this situation is when we're going to see the ordinances that were adopted by city council a couple of years ago that requires connection to sewer when it's available, when the sale of the, or transfer of property would kick in. So now that in that area, the infrastructure would be available, once a property sells, they would be required to connect to sewer, according to our ordinance.
Good point.
That still seems like a pretty high, just 20,000's a pretty high number.
Kevin?
Chris, I think a while back, Jay Lee, when you all got that triangular piece of land around 5th or 6th?
7th.
Palm, 7th, okay. There was talk of a lift station going there. Any, is that on the radar anytime soon, or?
That's a parcel that we purchased to put a lift station there if we, if slash when we extend gravity sewer in that area, but there's no plans to do that anytime in the foreseeable future. The funding is what stands in the way of putting in sewer. And this was an opportunity that we saw with the grant funding and to be able to use some of our own money to extend sewer and make it more affordable in that area. But, you know, we won't require anyone to tie it into the sewer in front of their house unless they choose to, unless your ordinance is, you know, property change in hand would be very effective if the infrastructure is already in place.
There's just one more question.
Jan.
Okay. Just for clarification, I think the numbers that people might have heard in the past about how expensive it was to hook up to sewer was, we were, that included the property owner paying for part of the sewer main that's in front of their house, the main line as well as the hookup, wasn't it?
Yes.
And with this grant, all you are asking is for the property owner to pay for just the hookup to a sewer main that's now in place. Is that correct?
They'll pay connection fees, but they will also have to factor in the cost for us to put that infrastructure in the ground. That will be included in the connection. That's the way we did it in the past when we did the Merit project.
Okay.
You're saying it's cost recovery model?
Yeah.
Okay. The last question I had was, just for clarification, the plant that's coming online in Forest Trail, I think when we met, when I was on planning commission, that capacity is just for the existing, is going to give us a lot of headroom. If a major sewer installation across the island over the next two decades, you'd need to upgrade that plant considerably?
Yeah. What we have built there is just to replace existing capacity on the island as it is today, but with the capability to increase capacity if needed, we don't have to build any more structure, any more tanks. That's as big as it's going to get. We would just drop equipment into the existing tanks.
Great, thanks.
Rusty?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of things. On the lift stations, you talked about tent there and owning that property, but, and I'm not asking you to give away anything sensitive or confidential, but I'm assuming, based on previous discussions we've had over the past few years, that you are also working to look at other locations to negotiate property for lift stations throughout the island?
Yeah. In that basin, that basin end, before we first down to 37, the Palm, we've got two sites that we're looking at now to try and acquire a parcel or an area to put a pump station. We haven't secured either one of them yet, but that's what we're looking at now. So, and if you were to extend sewer on the whole island, I think there's 16 different sewer, I mean, separate sewer basins, that'd be 16 places that we would need to put pump station sites. And we've identified an area, but not a spot.
Well, that was going to be the second part of my question, anyway. That would just be the beginning for what?
Yeah. The two sites that we're looking now, the one site that we would prefer to put it in is a little more cost-effective because we won't have to go that deep in the ground.
Mm-hmm.
The deeper you go, the more expensive it gets, especially on the coast. The second site would have to be a little deeper, and it could potentially drop the cost up a little bit.
Thanks.
Chris? Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update. Yep. Adam Ford, Dashboard, which is in, Short Term Rental Report, which is in your packet, Desiree?
Yes, just a few things that I wanted to highlight. Not a lot of changes from last month. Revenues and expenses, we're three months into the fiscal year. We'll get a little bit more detail on financial statements later on the agenda. On police department charges and actions, we are tracking ahead of last year on most activities. You can see calls of service, we continue to be ahead of the last two years. Same thing with traffic stops and parking citations. Not quite meeting 2021 numbers, but ahead of 2022. Livability charges, that's something that we're tracking carefully, over three times as higher as the year before in 2021. The docket for municipal court, we're trending a little bit lower compared to September of last year, but I think there's just some catch-up that we're doing from August. Fire department calls, there were 139 calls in September, and here you can see the note regarding auto aid calls, which we're monitoring monthly, and we'll be preparing a report for you all to consider. As you all recall, the automatic aid was approved in, for a pilot program for a year, and then we'll have an opportunity to review and decide whether we wanted to extend that. So we'll, we're tracking that carefully, but so far, we've received aid in 119 of the calls. The majority of them were canceled under our chief, Oliverius, spent some time last month explaining that. So we still are receiving generally more aid than what we're providing, and this arrangement certainly enhances the city's resources for the fire department when responding to calls for service. Public Works, garbage and yard debris, we're tracking really close, not a whole lot of changes compared to last year, pretty stable. Recreation Department registrations were ahead of last year and the year before, and the year, yes, in 2021 and 2022. They're doing really good work over there. Building Department, I just wanted to alert you all, we're seeing a little bit of a down, a little bit of a reduction in the activity, construction activity on the island that impacts building permits, impacts business licenses. We'll talk a little bit about that when we go through financial statements, but just to compare, current year, nine months out of 2023, we've permitted 17 homes. Same time last year, we had permitted 38 homes. We had issued 38 permits. And the construction value was $140 million compared to 64 this time. We anticipated some challenges in terms of our revenue, and when we were budgeting, y'all recall, we budgeted very conservatively the revenues for building permits and business license due to the high interest rates and that having an impact on construction activity, and we're seeing that. So that's just something that we're going to be tracking closely. On vacancies, we have two police officer vacancies in the police department. One offer has been made, so we're hoping to fill that. And for the code enforcement position, we either have issued an offer already or will be very, very close to issuing an offer for that role. So we should be, we should be able to fill those positions hopefully by the end of the year. In fire department, we have firefighter, paramedics positions with issued, given an offer to one of those positions. And we also are anticipating a retirement of Fire Marshal Stafford. He's retiring at the end of this year, so we've been looking for his replacement. Staff has interviewed folks, and an offer has been made to somebody to replace him before he leaves. We're hoping for some transition period for the two. A lot of activities in October. It's a busy month for our staff. We have, the farmer's market is the last one of the season this Thursday, I'm sorry, next Thursday, the 19th. Public Safety Department, both police and fire are hosting an open house for the community on the 20th from 4:00 to 6:00. And after you go there, just walk down the beach and go to the Ghostly Tie Tails, one of our community's favorites. We have, the mayor's hosting coffee with the mayor at the Marina off last Friday of the month, and we have the Halloween Parade and Carnival Friday, October 27th. Okay. Amy, if you don't mind putting the short-term rental dashboard, it's right after the regular dashboard. There you go. Okay, this is the, as was requested, we're providing and updating this schedule every month. We have a total of 1,809 short-term rentals issued this year so far for this license year, which again, started May 1st and will be valid until April 30, 2024. 184 of those have been issued to folks with properties that are at the 4% property tax rate, and for 6% properties with a short-term rental license, we're at 1,625. There are no current properties that have been identified by Rentalscape as being actively renting without having a license from the city, but we do have 10 licenses pending. So that means that those folks have either not paid the invoice received from our clerks in the building department, or are, they're waiting for additional information from those applications. We have requested the data from the county. You all recall, we continue to do the analysis of the number of rentals by type of dwelling using 2022 data. As y'all know, probably receive already a property tax bill from the county. We have, they have updated numbers for 2023, so we've requested that information so that we can update this distribution of type of dwelling and the 4% and 6% split for 20, it would be for 2023. So once we have it, it'll take us, it'll take us some time to go through it like we did earlier this year, and we'll be sharing that with you all. That's all I have.
Desiree, questions, comments? In your packet are also all the departmental reports. Next item is six strategic plan policy initiatives and priorities. Item A, livability. We have an update on the fire department's strategic plan. Chief Oliverius, you want to come share what's been going on survey-wise and kind of next steps?
And I'll just preface this. This is an initiative that Chief Oliverius and I discussed when we first hired him, and one of the key priorities that we discussed for the fire department, I think not only would be helpful for him to learn about the department and understand the issues that we're facing and develop strategies and tactics to address them. So the goal has been to really have an overview of where the department is now, where do we want to go, and make sure that those priorities align with the city's overall strategic plan. He's been working with the College of Charleston, the Riley Center for Liveable Communities, just as we did. They, as you all recall, they helped us develop our citywide strategic plan. So they've been working with the chief and the chief staff, and I'm just very impressed at the participation from the staff and how serious they're taking this process, and I think it'll yield really good results.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, thank you. College of Charleston has been phenomenal. The Riley Center, they do this all the time. It's what they do. So for us, we embarked on this process back in May, and so it's taken a little while. You know, we have a small staff, so it's hard to delegate some of these tasks, so we have to get to them when we can. But we've been working on this through community surveys. We had 621 respondents in the community surveys, and once we do the full plan, we'll have more information for you. I just wanted to break it down in small, small tidbits, you know, bite-sized chunks. But we had 621 respondents. 89% of those people who responded said that they wanted to see firefighter, paramedics, us offer that service. And so the investment that the council has approved for us shows that we're meeting, you know, the public expectations, so we're excited about that. We had, I believe it was 92 non-residents that responded. It shows that we have stakeholders, our guests are involved in Isle of Palms and that our community to be vibrant and great as well. We had an employee survey that, where we measured, you know, things like our internal communication, you know, how are we doing on our policies and procedures, and are we meeting the needs for training and those type of things. So I'll share that with you, you know, at a later date as well. And then we had a focus group at the Riley Center. We invited all our personnel to attend. We had quite a healthy group that attended, and they helped identify our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, the key drivers for us over the next five years, you know, what are, where are we strong, where are we weak, where do we have an opportunity to improve? And so it was good to hear from those folks real-time. At College of Charleston, their staff facilitated that. They kept us on track, and we stayed there for the better part of the day, getting good feedback from those individuals. So we kind of had a multi-pronged approach to get good data, because we know there are multiple projects out there, multiple needs that the city has. The fire department's just one piece of that, a very small piece, but obviously a very important piece. So, anyway, I'll get further into it. So the major forces and drivers, we looked at, you know, the next three to five years, like I mentioned, what are our strengths and opportunities, and what are some of those challenges? So this is a word cloud where the surveys from our community were put into the system, and you can see the big thing that comes out is community. We are a small community, but we're very strong, we're very tight. Let's see, paramedic is on there, service, respond, medical, advanced over to the right, ambulance at the top, and island, you know, island community, you know, Isle of Palms. So it was interesting to see that these words came up a lot in the responses as people were able to type in the narrative, type in information. You saw a lot of these key themes. And so the public, you know, they want us to respond and deliver an elite level of customer service, and advanced life support is a key piece of that. You can see that here in the word cloud. You can also see EMS on there as well. I always find those interesting. It's not a, you know, numerical type thing to measure, but it is important nonetheless. Vision, so we revamped our vision and mission statement, and that's how we started when we had all our personnel there with College of Charleston. We have to start to put that as our foundation. So Isle of Palms Fire Rescue, we want to provide an elite level of customer service to the community. We don't want to be good, we don't want to be average, we don't want to be excellent. We want to be elite. That's what our public and the visitors expect. And that's what I expect as your fire chief, to deliver that. Our mission statement, Isle of Palms Fire Rescue, we want to provide a professional and proactive approach. We want to provide a professional and proactive approach to community risk reduction. That's how do we, how do we stop that event from being catastrophic? We can do that through residential fire sprinklers. Isle of water and sewer, you know, help us with that. Make that a little bit cleaner and easier process, more affordable for the homeowner. On the short-term rental, the fire safety form that we have out there, the checklist, that helps the community risk reduction aspect. On the 17th, we're working with Carrie and her staff. We're going to deliver CPR training. We have eight people signed up for that, our residents. So, you know, hands-only CPR, if CPR is in progress before our arrival, that patient has a really good chance of surviving. So that's another piece of community risk reduction. So we want to be proactive and not reactive. Fire suppression, obviously, for our fire department, that's one of the main things we do. Emergency medical response, we talked about that, that piece of our mission with paramedic. And then water rescue. That's something that's, you know, new to me here at the level where we do it. And our people do a phenomenal job, absolutely unbelievable. North Charleston, City of Charleston, a lot of people come to us, ask us, how do you do, how do you do it? And train us, show us what we can do to be better. We have the personal water craft with the rescue sled on the back. We have the 20-foot boat that we have in service. We have a flat bottom boat. Obviously, we're surrounded by water because of barrier island. So we make, our people over the summer made quite a few rescues. Breach inlet, Deweze inlet on front beach. And in fact, we had six people on one of our personal water craft. Our guy from Polite, he was out there, one of our firefighters. And he has a background in ocean rescue. And a family had been swept under the breach inlet bridge. And he was able to rescue all four of those family members. He had a firefighter with him. So he had six people on that personal water craft. So a lot of people don't train for that, quite the level, that amount of people. But they adapted and overcame, and they do that, they do that all the time consistently. And for example, we had our people over the last month that responded to four working building fires, automatic aid. And one of those fires, excuse me, in Mount Pleasant, they had smoke. It was so dense and so dark and they just couldn't even see the hand in front of their face because of all the petroleum products that were being burned. The fuel was so, so thick and tar-like. So they have done a phenomenal job. They've done everything I've asked them to do. And you'd be very proud to hear the comments from other fire chiefs, from the other residents when they are out there making a difference. It's actually fantastic and really, really proud. So we updated those two things. These are the major forces and drivers that we identified through the survey and through talking with our people, our focus group. Recruitment and retention, we actually will see that later on as a strategic goal because we swapped that. Because we always hear about recruitment, retention, recruitment, retention. Well, one of our people, she brought it up, firefighter Luciano, she's like, I think we have it backwards. And I said, okay, I'll talk to her. She says, retention and recruitment. And I said, you're right. There's so much institutional knowledge and to be able to grow within the organization, come in as a firefighter and then become the fire chief. That's what I want our next people that we hire to be able to do. And so they're both extremely important. But if we can retain, our level of recruitment only goes down when we either expand our services or we have people retire. So that was a very important point that she brought up, and she's, she's right. So retention and recruitment, super, super important. Changes in technology. Obviously, we can leverage technology to make our job a lot, a lot easier. But with technology, it also makes it a little more complicated. Population growth. So we have, you know, a finite, you know, resource here. However, if we do go, continue to go vertical, if homes continue to get larger, if Wild Dunes expands, or we have other opportunities with our commercial district, if we have more people coming in for concerts. Our population might not be expanding over that 24-hour period. But during that period, during the days, we see the surges. As you know, we're playing with the summer, our population of people at risk or who might need assistance definitely increases just to this year's volume. Public expectations, you know, how do we meet and manage those? You see that as one of our strategic goals, one of our five. Unfunded mandates, changing regulations. You're very familiar with that, with the federal government, with the state, county. There are certain things that have to happen, and those are forecasted in the budget. And so the magic and the beauty of a strategic plan is we kind of get our five-year window out there of, hey, this is what the public sees. This is what the public is telling us. This is what our people are telling us. And it helps you make decisions based upon data and a measured approach. And you might not be able to phase it in in the first year, but you have a five-year window where you could potentially put in those initiatives where they fit with those priorities, whether they're stormwater, the coastal activity that we're seeing with the sand movement, all the different things that happen. You know, recreation has needs, our police department, they have needs, public services, they have needs. And we work tightly and very closely with all those departments, our city administration, everybody. We have opportunity. And so how do we leverage that? And how do you, as a council, make those decisions with a limited amount of funds? If you don't have a limited, unlimited amount of revenue. And so for us, with the strategic plan, we want to get you the data, get you the information. And so you can forecast these things out so they fit with the city and they can be sustainable and supportive. Continually evolving, our resiliency issues. Automatic aid has helped a lot with that. Any fire department in America, any, any public service organization can be overwhelmed at times. You have to depend on, depend on your neighbors. We've addressed a lot of those. I feel much more confident. Six firefighter medics that we were approved for helps with our water rescue and all those other things. So we really, city council, y'all have, and our administration has supported those initiatives and really minimized the resiliency challenges that we have. Not to say that we don't have any of those, but any emergency can take on the life of the zone. But what we've done with automatic aid and additional staffing has been phenomenal. And I can't thank you enough for that support and that vision. Continually evolving emergency responses. We were speaking with a candidate and they had worked for a local shipping company. And they were talking about the lithium ion batteries and the risk that the shipping industry is taking on and what the Coast Guard is looking at doing with that and how do we handle it? From a port situations, of course, for us, we have lots of commerce that moves to this area, but we have a lot of visitors, we have a lot of golf carts, we have a lot of, you know, vehicles that are powered with electric, you know, battery power. So we spoke to Wild Dunes and what are they looking at doing as far as their charging stations and codes and those kind of things? So this is all due to the fire service with the lithium ion batteries. So that's an example of an emergency response that is new. It wasn't really here to the level that it is now, and it's going to continue to evolve. So we have to be prepared with training and equipment and trying to stay out of the curve. Demographic changes with the population. We're all getting older. So what are we, you know, attracting as far as our demographics? You know, pediatric level to, you know, the aging, aging population. They all have certain needs and certain, there are risks associated with each of those from a medical standpoint. So we need to monitor that and be prepared to deliver that elite level of customer service to all of those levels of our demographic makeup. Budgetary restrictions, like we mentioned, you know, we don't have an unlimited amount of revenue to fund everything that we want to fund. And then of course, traffic, that was mentioned as far as, you know, summertime, you know, Palm Boulevard, negotiating that, you know, Isle of Palms connector and the side streets. So strengths and opportunities, so you'll see up there. Listed first, council administrator support. So we can't do it without y'all. That came from our people. That was listed as a strength. And so thank you for being, being supportive. Financial resources, the city is in a better financial position than a lot of cities in the United States, but we also have a lot of needs as well. Talented and diverse workforce, training and opportunities, equipment. Our equipment is fantastic for a small municipality of our size. Automatic aid, community relations, and cultural transition. And that's, you know, me coming in as a new fire chief. You know, Chief Graham was here for quite a while, did an absolutely wonderful job. Stellar. And so just me just picking up after her is a little bit different as far as, you know, the direction we're going because of all those different drivers that we have that we didn't have, you know, five, 10 years ago. We constantly have to adjust and retool and try to get ahead of the curve. Some of our weaknesses, communication, that I was, I think our employees rated me at like 66% satisfaction rate for my internal communication. I made some changes there. I've done a bunch of different things that have helped, a bunch of different strategies. But we have moved at lightning speed and a very fast pace. And some of that, some of those messages did get communicated. But I listened to them, I heard them, and we're making progress there. So I look forward to seeing what they're, what they say, you know, 12 months, if that has been a help. Budgetary restrictions, staffing, and that's really what people were talking about as far as fewer potential employees that we would have available to hire. People, you know, coming into public service for the first time. There's a lot of opportunity in the private sector with wages where they are and people able to work remote. Our career might not be as attractive as it was 10, 20 years ago. So how do we target that audience to get more, more of a chance to get that elite employee? Because we're a very small staff. We get one or two that just don't fit with us or our mission. It can definitely compromise that. So we have to get the right person. And competitive benefits like we have, competitive wages, their wage and comp coming up. You know, we do that every two years, which is going to put us in an excellent position to stay competitive in the market is super, super important. And so we want to have an opportunity to get the best of the best. Cultural transition, which we mentioned. Diversity of disciplines, that's kind of in our mission statement there, the water, the fire, the EMS, you know, vehicle accidents. We have hazmat, tech rescue. We have all these other things that automatic aid helps us with. But our people still have to know the basics of each of those. We have a finite infrastructure. Our stations are only so large. I had to forget some great meetings with fire marshal Stafford and the Wild Dunes Community Association and the resort. And we had conversations about their needs, what are their expectations of us, anything that we could do differently. And an opportunity potentially in the future to reduce response times in the back of that Wild Dunes community area if the city, if we identify that that's a need and we consider additional infrastructure. The ISO, we were rated Class 1 a few years ago. One of their recommendations was to consider adding additional infrastructure, you know, public safety-wise, fire department-wise in Wild Dunes. And so the resort, they have a lot of expectation there. Wild Dunes Community Association, there's expectation there. And so we want to make sure across Isle of Palms, we're delivering, delivering that elite level of customer service. So we'll continue to monitor those response times, look at opportunities, and see how we roll that into our strategic plan if we need to add an additional infrastructure. External perception, some people think, you know, we, we don't do a whole lot. And we have to figure out how to get that message out there. We are a fire department, but we just do more than that. You know, we had, there's a lot of people from Tennessee here right now on spring break. And our people were signing the back of a coat, a jacket, firefighter. And she was so excited, I think she was seven years old. And she's taking karate and she wants to be a public servant. And so all our people are signing her jacket that she wore that has a little firefighting jacket she came up to today. So we have an opportunity with those contacts, even though they don't live here, but we have an opportunity to show that, hey, the fire service is dynamic. We have some great people, a lot of good personality, and we're here to serve, whether you're, you live on Isle of Palms or not. And our people took the time out of their, their day. They just got back from a fire alarm. They spent the extra 15, 20 minutes to show the truck. And I'm sure they were sweaty and they wanted to get in there and get some water, but they took the time to do that. And so they're constantly doing those things. I'm sure when y'all drive by, you see them out there in station one and station two. They might be filling somebody's bicycle tire or just giving them directions or showing them the truck so that our people are always busy, even if they're not on an emergency response. Needing policy and procedure updates. We've done a lot in a short amount of time, so that's on me, I'm working on that. And these, all that information, that all I said boil down to five strategic priorities that we want to focus on over the next five. Retention and recruitment, so that's number one. So we've got to have elite people if we want to deliver an elite level of customer service. Meet and manage public expectations. You know, how, what does the public expect of us? You know, we would love to be at every emergency in two minutes, but it's just not possible. So how do we meet and manage those public expectations? How do we educate the public? Communication, internal and external, our Instagram, if you're not following it, you know, social media is wonderful. Firefighter Luciano, she does a wonderful job of that. Chandra has helped us a lot with her press releases and getting the information out there. And on the 20th, again, we have an open house to try to get out to the community in a different way and partnership with Chief Cornet of the police department. So we can improve there. So we want to find new and different ways to connect with our community. Social media is one way to do that. I need to get out there more. I'm planning to do that over the next 12 months with different community associations. I know Wild Dunes is a
A ton over there. And have, you know, coffee with the chief and those kind of things. Give more opportunity for people to connect with, with us. Operational efficiency and resiliency. Automatic, automatic aid has helped a ton with that. You can see all the metrics that we track. We're getting the data directly from the CAD. Now, it's a little bit cleaner than RMS, it takes not quite as long to get that data. So automatic aid has been a wonderful piece of what we're doing. We have automatic aid, of course, of Sullivan's Island and then with the other six local departments. Sustainable budget. We have to operate within a budget. So that's operational and capital. How do we, how do we maintain, how do we maintain that? And Lynn and Chief Hathaway are phenomenal with keeping us on track. They're fantastic. They do a really great job. And we want to be elite stewards of that public dollar because every dollar means a lot. And it's taken in and the public expects us to maximize that. And so we want to make sure that we use those funds to the best of our ability and to what's been given. So that's what we have. We're going to develop our goals and our objectives off these five strategic priorities. Once we do all that, have the full plan to be reviewed and any comments that city council would like to make on that. And eventually, in the next few months, we would like to have that plan approved and supported by, by city council, just like have it adopted, just like our, our city strategic plan. We want those to kind of mirror each other. It's very important.
Chief, thank you for involving the College of Charleston, your staff, making the time for that. Residents, I mean, I think it's just been a great process so far, so thank you for doing that. Doesery, anything you want to add to that? Jan?
Just a couple of questions. What is our fire department rated now in terms of, is it a rating system?
Class 1, we're still a Class 1.
Class 1, which is the highest class, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the second one is, in terms of retention and recruitment, are we fully staffed now?
No, ma'am.
You're not.
No.
Yeah, we went through, that was in the dashboards. You have four paramedics and one firefighter.
So we're down one firefighter. The four paramedics are new, are in new positions, so that we wouldn't have had anyone there. So there's one vacancy for a firefighter.
Yes, ma'am. Two vacancies for, two firefighters. So we have two vacancies and then we have the four firefighter, paramedics.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Doesery, next up. Amy, if you can back up to the IOP County Park Emergency Vehicle Access Project. Just an update, Doesery there.
Yes, in your packet on pages 30, 33 through 35, it's, we included the, roughly the final design of the the, roughly the final design of the project that we anticipated if, to, to be completed before the end of this fiscal year. This is a project that we initiated with the county, and our goal would be to have a more efficient access for vehicles to respond to calls on the beach. Right now, they utilize Ninth, Fifth Avenue and the county park. Well, some of what we're seeing down this end with erosion, it's, our goal would be to, to eliminate that and be closer to Front Beach where most of our calls to that area are from. And this, this plan has been, has gone through several iterations, providing feedback from the county park and, and the engineers. And we're really close. I think, you know, it may change some, you know, small items, small details here or there, but roughly, I think we're ready for you all to bless it. I know there's no, no votes at this meeting, but want to give you an opportunity to ask any questions. And our goal, as I think we've indicated in the past, would be to bid this out in November, hopefully execute a contract, and be able to start construction in January. We budgeted $200,000, $200,000 for this. Obviously, as well known, it's not until we go out for bid that we'll know actual, potential actual costs and whether or not we are, we would be within budget, or we would be in the, in this position to seek additional funds to cover the difference. So that's all I have. Unless there are any specific questions, we presented this to the Public Safety Committee. There's a general agreement that this plan works. Again, our public safety folks have been involved in this, in this process, and we're excited to kick it, kick it off.
Thank you, Desiree. Environmental, no items. Desiree, quick update under Public Services on the RFQ and the RFP. Again, we're not looking for action tonight, but just a quick update on kind of where we are.
Yeah, pretty much on both. And, and, you know, if we want to get into any details, we can. But at this point, with everything that we have been, that we have had in the last couple of weeks, we have, we have not been able to do a lot of progress. I'll tell you a quick update on the RFQ process. We did have a special meeting with the Public Services and Committee. A couple of weeks ago, we had a presentation from both Trident with their partner for the design build team with McMillan, Patson Smith as the architect, and the other proposer, the others group that submitted or responded to our RFQ was Hill Construction partnering with Coast Architects. We've had experience with both. We're still in the process of collecting the scoring sheets from the committee members and the staff, and will be providing those to you all at the end of the, at the end of the month.
At our council meeting.
Yes. Same thing with the request for proposals. The Public Safety Committee held a meeting where we heard presentations from four firms. Still in the process, haven't had an opportunity to go through those scoring sheets. And particularly, that is a very technical and complicated process for evaluation, and we frankly have not had the time to, to really get to it. However, it is something that we need to really, you know, get geared and started to really pay a lot of attention to, because our goal would be to have something in place for next season. And that means you start going backwards from that. We don't have a whole lot of time between now and having the holidays and, and spring break, believe it or not, being kind of around the corner. So our goal would be to work on this this month and hopefully present some alternatives for council to discuss.
Okay. Good. Very good. Personnel, Desiree, I know this has been ongoing. To update on wage and compensation study review.
Yes. So we engaged Evergreen a couple of months ago when we started the, our fiscal year twenty-four started. The first step of that process was to do an employee survey on compensation. That has been done. We received those results this week. We're still going, going through them. The next, what they're working currently is evaluating markets. So how do we compare today? How are we compared to our peers? We're using the same list of peers that were looked at in 2020 when we did the full-on report, reviewing that as well. The employee feedback, the employee survey was responded to by eighty-three employees. So we're really happy at the level of participation, and we've gotten really good data from it. And we'll be sharing that with you at a later date. But it, it does reaffirm that the city doing this process at this time is important. It's the right thing to do. And in order for the city to meet our compensation philosophy that was adopted by council a couple of years ago, we will be, we'll probably be in a position to need to make some adjustments to remain competitive. A lot of municipalities, almost every municipality around us, has implemented significant and dramatic changes to their compensation plan. And I, we believe that we are running, we're running behind, whereas two years ago, we were ahead compared to everybody, particularly our public safety, which was the goal, to be above market and more than competitive. We are, we are running into challenges with keeping, keeping that. And just anecdotally, the two years after the city implemented the wage and compensation recommendations and presented and adopted in 2020, we were not having, we did not have a lot of turnover. It was, when we had a vacancy, it was, it was filled pretty quickly. Now we're having vacancies open for three, four, five months. And it is, it has been a struggle to find, to find positions and hire people. And obviously, retention is another piece that we want to address. So it's timely. I think employees appreciate that the city's committed to looking at it and ensuring that we'll remain competitive, whilst certainly being fiscally responsible and considering this is just one, one piece of the whole bucket. But we anticipate having the market report end of this month, early November. And we'll be, once we do, we'll be presenting that to, to council.
Thank you.
Desiree, just a quick question. Do we do exit interviews when?
We do.
Okay.
We do. And we have, one of the things that HR Manager Lad and I are going to be working on moving forward is a report. Obviously, these exit interviews are confidential. We want them to be highly confidential so that folks feel, feel comfortable. But what are some of the things that we're hearing? And recently, we know we have lost a couple of folks from the public safety world to other departments nearby, closer to home, and immediately making ten, fifteen thousand dollars from what, what they're making here. So some of the information that we got from the survey, people are really happy here. People are really happy to work for the city of Ala Palms. They enjoy their relationships with their coworkers. They enjoy the work that they're doing. They feel like they're making a difference. But pay is a significant issue. And when you have police officers, firefighters that are driving an hour to come to work, they're, they're driving past three or four municipalities where they could work, it's, it's a challenge to, to keep people, to keep people employed. And to attract people, to have people decide to come work with us when they could go to North Charleston, they can go to the Mount Pleasant, they can go to the city of Charleston and make more money. So yes, we do, we do, do exit interviews. Almost everybody accepts and participates in those. And those have been really helpful to gain some insight in the reasons why people may, may be heading out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Desiree. No other item for discussion. Seven is financial review. In your packet are financial statements through the end of September. So we're one quarter into our current fiscal year. Deborah, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I want to start with the overall funds. We are tracking, revenues are tracking fourteen percent of the budget, while expenses are tracking eighteen percent of the, the budget. This, of course, is an annual budget, so it's hard to look at this on a monthly basis. But I just want to point out that our costs are, are fixed. So there's always going to be timing differences with the revenue, as revenue come in at different times of the month. Like, property taxes will, bills will go out in October. If you haven't received them already, then the income will start coming in around December, January. So there's always going to be some timing differences here. Also, I want to point out that during the budgeting process, there, the, the city decided to use some reserve funds since tourism funds are restricted to two years. You have to reuse those within two years. So just want to point that out to anyone that's looking at the budget and comparing where we are to what was budgeted. Also, want to point out that at least $2.2 million of the budget is, will be fully or partly covered by grants or, or state, the state's budget. And those revenues are not included in our budget. We don't, we don't budget for those. So there's money that's there that's not in this revenue budget. We, we budget the expenditure. We don't budget the grant revenue.
So that's money from grants that we will be receiving?
Or the state budget.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Yes. As far as the general fund, we are twelve, we are running twelve percent of budget and revenue, and twenty-three percent in expenses. And the target, of course, is twenty-five percent, because we're three months in our first physical, our first quarter of the fiscal year. Parking revenue is continuing to, to do well. We're already at forty-six percent of the budget. And other revenues, including court and interest income, is forty-four percent of the budget. As Desiree mentioned, based on the dashboard, our business licenses and business permits have slowed down. But this, of course, was projected in the budget. We budgeted more conservatively compared to prior year. So this was like no surprise. We understood that the interest rates were going up, so the construction was going to be decreased.
And just about every house on this island's been touched, seems like, based on port-a-lit and dumpster contractors.
Are there any questions regarding page one? I want to move on to the cash balances. As you can see, we have about $41 million, almost $42 million between the balance at Truist and our LGIP accounts. The average interest rate for the month of September was 5.6054. This is up a little bit, slightly up compared to 5.589 of, of the prior month. Just also want to point out that the, the highlighted, the blue, the funds that are in blue are the restricted funds. And that's about 20,000, 20 million dollars, I'm sorry. Our annual audit, the auditors will be here next Monday, starting next Monday. So they will be here all week, and we'll be preparing, you know, to get them what they need for our annual audit.
I guess, Deb, go ahead.
On that, we typically plan for the audit presentation to happen at our November meeting. They are running behind the schedule, and we anticipate the presentation, that first meeting in December, y'all know we have to, we're by code required to have a special meeting every year, first Tuesday of December. We're planning and to have a presentation of the, of the audit, for the auditors at that time.
As for the tourism reports, there was only a collection for one account, and that's in hospitality tax. That's page forty of your packet. $153,000 came in. And that, that was the only fund that received funds for the month of September. And just to cover the project worksheets, we have two this month. That's on page forty-three. Council approved the $42,000 change order for Thomas and Hutton due to the increased cost of engineering. And then there was an expense of $171,000 that went to Quality Enterprises for payment application number nine. And that's, I'm sorry, that, that's for drainage phase three project. And for drainage four, there was, there was an expense paid out of $9,000, and this, this project will be closed this month.
This is the phase four master plan that we have received from Davis and Floyd. We're closing out. This will be the last time we see this project worksheet since we've completed it.
Deborah, thank you.
I've got a question.
Sure.
So Debbie, do you, is your feeling that the city financially is still in a strong position?
I do. Yes, sir.
You know, we have a really strong credit rating?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And we have good, strong cash balances. And there's been some talk that the city may be running a deficit. There's, never heard of such a thing, but what's your feeling about that?
Well, from my understanding, the, the city budget can't run a deficit.
Right.
It's illegal to run a deficit. And like, like I stated earlier, I think some of the, when you look at the budget, it looks like it may look like a deficit, but some of those funds are coming from the reserve fund. They may not be in the budget collected that this year, this fiscal year, because we're using some of the reserve funds that have already been collected.
Right.
Forty-some million dollars we have sitting here.
And where actual revenues was $3.7 million, that doesn't include the two million that you just mentioned from the state?
That's correct.
So that's, that, that, that's never included, but expenditures are.
That, that is correct.
So we're definitely not running a deficit.
We'll pull down the money from the state, you know, at some point, and we'll recognize it.
Yeah, I think from, I think from the cash budget standpoint, though, we have budgeted 26.4. We're budgeted to spend 27 and change. So we're going, dipping into our fund balances in order to cover the difference.
That is correct.
So from a cash perspective, we are running a deficit on paper. The other thing we've got is we've got the $2 million doc that we're doing. So that is not in that, in that number as well. So there's another 2 million in cash that we're going to spend. It's just not showing up in that, those numbers.
The doc is in our budget.
Yeah, it's not in the, it's not in the 26 and 27. So it's outboarded.
The marina's left out of the, it's on an accrual basis, so it's left out on a cash basis.
Right. So that's out, that's outboarded.
But again, I think to Deborah's point, I mean, when we did the budget last year, I mean, we consciously made a decision to dip into reserves to take care of some of the projects.
Right.
That's sitting on the budget, first page.
Right. But I think the implication, council.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
You know, so I mean, that was a conscious decision, so.
No, absolutely correct. I'm, I'm just saying, I think the implication is that we're, we aren't, we are dipping into our cash reserves in order to cover our funding this year.
Right. But I think Desiree's point earlier, I mean, we, we have to spend some of this tourism.
Absolutely. I'm not, no, no debate there.
So one final point. A lot of the things that are budgeted consistently, year after year after year, do not get funded. That we might have the budget expenditure, but for one reason or another, the project or the piece of equipment or whatever is not the, it's not purchased.
So we're having a surplus because we don't spend the money, which is a project that was in the budget that didn't get budget, that didn't get delivered. So I, my, my point is, is that from a cash in and cash out, we are running into our savings accounts. Period.
I think it's semantics, but okay.
That is correct. Your point is correct.
Thank you.
Yes. But that's what the money's for.
Understood. I just don't want to give the implication that we're, you know, we're, we're bringing in more money, more cash than we are spending. That, which was, I think, the implication. I think we can.
Yeah, the budget includes, the budget includes a plugging number that is, that is, in order for the city to have a, a balanced budget, we do plug in a number. And you're right, in this case, we're, we're utilizing more aggressively tourism funds for specific projects. Tourism funds do have to be used within two years for specific eligible activities. And I think that we had a lot of conversation during the budget preparation process for the city to be more aggressive and identify more projects that could be eligible using tourism funds as a one-time, one-time projects. This year, we are in really good shape when you compare to all the grant revenue that we will be receiving, that it's currently not anticipated in the budget from, from a revenue perspective. So there will be expenditures that will be covered by grant revenue that are, that are not budgeted for. But you, you are correct. I mean, we are tapping into our fund balance, and I think it was done intentionally.
Agreed. Is there a danger there?
I mean, with the city had a couple of really good years where our tourism revenues were high, higher than budget. And I And I think the city recognized that and tried to maximize and leverage those funds to do projects that otherwise would be, would have to be either not done or funded through a general, general revenue.
Deborah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Love to get your hands around. How many months have you been here now? Six?
No. Not quite.
Almost, almost.
Seems like it.
Seems like it, yeah. Probably a r, or, thank you, Deborah. Next item is procurement. Desiree, you've got two quick report out items here.
Yes. One is the award of a contract to Manor Fencing, and this is for the fence around the Bark Park. This is part of the improvement that we planned for, for that amenity. And we issued an RFP. We've received about six or seven responses, if I'm, if I'm correct. And we issued an award to them. They were, they came in lowest at $21,000. So, this is just a report. It's budgeted, and it's under 25, so we can go ahead and, and award. And it's under budget, actually, so we can award it and just report it.
Because I think our, our budget number was either 50 or 60.
60 for the entire project. We were anticipating 30,000 would be the cost of the fence.
For the fence space, yeah, thank you. And the next item, a grant from the firefighters.
Yes. And the, I think I sent you all the notice, and we've, you know, we've been advertising this pretty proudly. The city received another grant this, this month, last month from FEMA, and this is to purchase physical equipment for the gym for both, both stations. And this is an effort to enhance our wellness program for the fire department. This grant is covered at the 95, 5, 95% share. It's, 95% of the cost is covered by FEMA. The city's share is 5,000, 5%, which would be around $5,000. We'll be covering that with current funding in our capital.
Yeah, thank y'all for that. Chief or staff or whomever.
We all, we take the village, ma'am.
Speaking of spending money, capital projects update?
All right. Y'all ready?
A lot of them, yeah.
All right, so work for, we'll go through drainage projects first. As we've reported before, the 30th Avenue Outfall Project has been completed. Work for the second outfall, 36th Forest Trail, will begin next week. The road detour is scheduled to start on the 17th. We have issued notices to all the property owners around that area. We hand-delivered these notices, been putting it out on social and have ads in the, in the paper coming up. 41st Avenue Outfall Project, SCORE has selected a vendor. Their name is Sebastian Group. They met all the requirements from the RFP process and were in the process, they're in the process of executing this contract. We'll have a kickoff meeting this week with them.
Does that include covering it as well? Or is that just the outfall?
So, this project includes the outfall improvements and piping a section of ditch all the way to where 41st Avenue ends. So, right where the entrance to the Marina curves to go to the boat ramp, that's where the pipe currently ends. Once a contract is executed with Sebastian Group, our next step will be to request them to provide a change order to, to know what it would cost to pipe it all the way to the head wall, which will be at the very end of the, of the ditch, for us to make a decision whether it's, it's a cost-effective option for the city to completely pipe the ditch. Those would have to, whatever that cost would be, would have to be covered by the city. I am pleased to announce, I think I've shared this with you all, that when SCORE opened bids, the lowest bid and qualified bid was 900,000 over their budget and what they had approved for this project for the city. We went back to SCORE and through their panel, requested the additional funds through their staff, requested the additional funds to be covered by the Office of Resilience, highlighting the importance of this, of this infrastructure and its connection to our fire station, which, as you all know, once it floods, it's, you know, we have to, we have to take out all the equipment and essentially that fire station becomes unusable. So, it is a critical piece of infrastructure for us, and that, that additional funding of $900,000 was approved, and it's going to be covered by the granting agency. Anything away from that, it's on us. So, I think we'll be in good shape moving forward. The Waterway Boulevard multi-use path process, we are working on the contract with Thomas and Hutton for the design, engineering, and permitting. This is something y'all, City Council approved last month. And then this is a new addition. I know it's not a capital project per se, it's a plan, but I think it's important that we keep it top of mind, the sea level rise adaptation plan. Staff held a meeting, a kickoff meeting last week, and the next step will be hosting stakeholder meetings, bringing in the Water and Sewer Commission, Waldens Community Association, anybody in our community that, that needs to chime in into this process. That'll be the next step. Yes?
For the Waterway work, what's the timing on that? I mean, what, what's next? And when can we actually see something happen?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll give it a shot. So, we have, we've engaged Thomas and Hutton for the design and the engineering. We're working on executing that contract to, to allow them to start the work of, of draw, putting drawings and, and design and construction specifications. We anticipate, this is a project that we have submitted requests for funding from FEMA from a COVID grant for 90% of the construction costs. And we anticipate that FEMA will be making final, final notices on awards first quarter of next year. Our project has, was identified as a priority by our local agency, the South Carolina Emergency Management Division. So, we fully anticipate that it'll be funded. Once it's funded, they have to go through the bidding process to select the contractor. There's probably easement acquisition necessary for that because we're anticipating enhancing that sidewalk up to eight feet. So, there's, there's a lot of work, unfortunately. I wish I could go out with a shovel and start pouring concrete.
Well, but again, we, council made a decision to wait on that grant.
That's right.
We could have moved quicker if we wanted to, but we're so far down the path with the grant application that we decided to wait.
But that ti, the timing on that is, that's what, that's early next year?
To receive notice on the grant is early next, yes.
So, that's when things would actually start progressing?
That's right.
Have everything teed up this last part of this year, January, and be ready to go.
Yeah, we, we are ahead by granting this contract to Thomas and Hutton rather than waiting until next spring to start that process. We wanted to get them to, to get working so that when an announcement is made, we're hopefully close to being designed. All right. IOP Marina, Public Dock and Green Space, we have both permits on hand. Received an update from Kirby this morning that the design is about, almost complete. I should be receiving that for review by the end of this week. Our goal would be to immediately put this out for bid, to get a contractor in place and start construction. There is a, there is a drawing here in your packet, I think it's page 46, that shows what the public dock will look like. The pier extension or expansion to 16 feet, I think it's like four or five feet now, was approved. So, we're really excited about that. We have two coverings and then a dedic, two covered areas where we'll have swings and benches. We also, it also includes a dedicated ADA accessible gangway to the floating dock, which will have two kayak launchpads, one fully ADA. All right, the T-Dock repairs, we are reapplying. It's a, it's a minor permit from OCRM that we need to get to authorize minor repairs and maintenance of that, of that dock. We have $200,000 in the budget for, for that, and we believe that bidding it with the public dock should, should be, generate some savings, hopefully if we get the same contractor to do the same work. So, that'll be our plan to be ready for inclusion of that scope in the public dock bidding process. Marina dredging, this is an ongoing process. They are still working on identifying alternatives for the dredge disposals and preparing the, the permit application. I, I do not have a, an estimated timeline on when the permit will be completed and ready for settlement. The County Park Emergency Vehicle Access, we, we talked about that. We're ready to get final design approved by both, by both the City Council and the PRT Board Commission. Beach access path improvements, we've identified a handful of beach access paths that would benefit for, from either enhancements such as foot bridges or ADA compliant boardwalks. And these are the ones that staff has identified, and we did that by reviewing complaints and citizen feedback and, and, and in, on, on the field surveys by, by visual assessments by our staff. And those include 26A and 36A. We are able to install a foot bridge or boardwalk. It would not be ADA compliant due to the requirements of the slope and the, the, the height of the dune, but we can enhance the, enhance the, the beach access regardless. We have identified two for the ADA compliant boardwalks, very similar to what we have at 34A. And those are at 46th Avenue and 52nd, this, the 52nd Beach Access Path. There is already a boardwalk at 46th Avenue, so we would be replacing it with an ADA compliant boardwalk. Our next step will be approaching the neighbors around those areas to let them know about the city's plans and our goal to enhance that. And we would like council's blessing before we go out and survey and start working on the design for the, for those projects. But the goal would be for the city to fund the foot bridges on 26, 26A, 26A and 36A with funding from the Charleston County Green Belt Program. We will be requesting funding in January for that. A combination of those funds and city funds budgeted, and then funding the two ADA compliant boardwalks with the state grant or state funding allocation from, that we received a couple of months ago. We haven't received the money yet. We received notice that it had been approved. All right, beach maintenance and restoration. We went through detail earlier in the previous meeting. Unless there's any questions, I'll just skip that. We are drafting the contract for the scope of work that was authorized by, by the city last month for CSC. Fire Department Exhaust System for fire stations one and two, it's in process. We've approved that contract, and we anticipate completion early next year. City Hall renovation, I think we talked about that earlier. Outdoor fitness court, constructions in process. I think if you go over there, you can see some of the work happening. There's some pictures there. We anticipate them pouring concrete this week. After that, it needs secure, and if everything goes according to schedule this of today, the outdoor fitness equipment should be installed second week of November. Dock park improvements, the installation of the new hardscape areas has been completed, and I reported earlier that we've approved the contract for the fence. Undergrounding power lines, we have received the final design, and good lord, I know that's difficult to read. If y'all want the, the, it's more than 11 by, by 17. We have a big, massive plan upstairs if you want to look at it. But this is the final design for the project at 14th Avenue, so it, it anticipates, Amy, it's okay, I don't think I understand it. To underground all of those utility lines that are shown in purple. The cost estimate for that project is around $100,000. We have, we budgeted 75,000 in FY '24. The city's commitment would be 50, 50% of, of final construction costs, and the other half would be covered by Dominion Energy and their non-standard service fund. We are in the process of easement acquisition. We're helping Dominion, these are easements that Dominion Energy needs to get, and we're helping it, helping them in that process by connecting the right partners and communicating the city's vision with this process. And then finally, DOT Palm Boulevard Bike and Pedestrian Enhancements. Chief Gornett and I met with the DOT staff yesterday, and they provided us some preliminary drawings for the concepts for Palm Boulevard to accommodate bike, pedestrian, beautification enhancements and...
All that.
All of that, all of the things. Based on our, on our meeting, they're going back and making some final revisions to that, but I, I'll go ahead and send you what we have just so that you can provide initial feedback. But it won't be ready for public distribution until we get those, those things adjusted as we discussed yesterday. But good progress on that, and I know this is not on the agenda specifically, but the IOP Connector Project has been, has been given to a, another engineering firm, AECom. They are the ones that are working on the engineering for that project, and we'll be having a kickoff meeting with them in the next month. That's all I have.
One project. There'd be no further business.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.